But Mary, would you please do attendance?
Certainly. President Donnelly?
Here.
Vice President Griffith?
Here.
Secretary Hanser, present. Treasurer Bailey?
Here.
Trustee DeAlessandro?
Here.
Trustee Foster? Absent. And Trustee Schaefer? Is absent.
Thank you, Mary. Superintendent Weaver, I think we have at least one change to the board agenda?
Yeah, we have one last minute change that we're going to make. We're going to move item 6C, bid recommendation for the district-wide mass notification system project, up in the board agenda to 4A.
So everyone, 6C, which is the bid recommendation for the mass notification system, which we asked for a display of the product, so that we can do this up at the beginning, these guys can get that done and leave. All right? All right, very good. Any other changes to the board agenda?
That would be it tonight.
All right. We have a consent agenda before us. We've got the minutes of June 14th. We've got the closed session number one of June 14th and the closed session of number two on June 14th. Would someone like to put that motion on the floor? Chad?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, is there support? Corey, support? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we go on to 6C. Everyone, this is the bid recommendation that was shared with us at our last meeting, last Tuesday. Why don't we put the motion on the floor and make their demonstration part of the discussion? Sound good? Who would like to put this motion on the floor? Corey?
Move to award the district-wide mass notification system project to Clements Electric in the amount of $1,034,500 as recommended.
Thank you very much. Is there support? Chad, support? Discussion? We'll start the discussion with the presentation. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely. We're not shy. Schaefer, is there anybody who'd like brochures or any type of?
Please.
This is the panel itself. Anybody else? So this is not that panel. This is kind of an antiquated system, which is the best I could come up with as a demonstration unit for the short time we had. Essentially, mass notifications are generally built into supervised fire alarm systems, which is what we're looking at here. So this is kind of a combination system that can work as fire alarm or mass notification. It's just configured up to whatever we need for that particular scenario in order to make it work. So the main difference, and I hope this doesn't mess up on me because I've got trouble on here. So between the fire alarm systems and the mass notification system is really this color of the strobe itself. The speaker is used the same, but the color of the strobe is yellow. So we'll generally get a yellow flashing strobe to go along with the announcements. Now, announcements can be customized as to, there'll be several activation points on any panel that allow you to indicate what that situation is, whether it be a lockdown situation, a severe weather situation, any other type of situation that you may come across that we can preload. Everything's downloadable until we preload messages. We preload the scenarios that you want to occur during that. Plus, you can also make live notifications as well. So if there's something that's not in the canned messages that you're looking to announce and relay, then you can pick up the microphone and be able to do a page to the entire facility for that as well. So, now this is not the exact message, hoping it works. Attention, please. An emergency has been reported in this building. Kind of what the system's going to do, it's going to come out with a pre-announced message. You have instructions to everybody of what needs to be done. Normally, with the yellow alert strobe. Now, the yellow alert strobes generally will override anything with fire alarm because that is something that is quite a code that becomes the primary source once the event is notified. So that is basically a input-selected notification for the system. Again, we can do, on the new system, up to 250 canned messages, so we can load it up with as many things as you want. And then we can have activation points from any type of scenario that we want. So we can have buttons on the panels if you later decide you want to have other input activations to do other things. The system is just extremely customizable to any type of scenario that you want, what gets displayed, where it gets displayed, what gets sent to a central station location, things like that. You can also, like I said, there's a live microphone, and trust me, when the newer one is so much better than the older one. But that's what we got. So when I push the mic button, what it's going to do is give me a pre-announced tone. (bell dings) It can be set up to the any tone we want. And that's just an attention getter to say there's a message going to come that everybody should listen. Testing, one, two, three, four. And that will be announced throughout the facility so that you'd be able to page instructions or what needs to happen, or all clears, things like that. And then, again, I put it in this one here so that when you activate that, I'll call, it will alert the strobe as well, so people know, hey, listen, the strobe's going up in case you have hearing impaired as well. That, again, is customizable. It does not have to go off. We can set up different switches, so it can go off for certain scenarios and not go off for other scenarios. So you can do pages without having to activate all the strobes as well for general situations. There's also a gentleman right up there in the red. He has what we call a hyperspike speaker. This is another mass notification device we use for larger areas like this, and he's going to demonstrate the clarity of something like that. Testing, testing, one, two, three. The system's designed to compensate for the hard surfaces of a gymnasium, parking lots. And so the intelligibility is quite clear from where you're sitting. I'm just talking in a normal voice right now. We can adjust the volume. Go ahead and kick it up a little bit. Turn it up a little bit. How's that? More? A little better? Kick it up. Do you want me to yell? Yep. Okay. So anyways, this is a battery-operated unit. Typically, you would have a separate power supply, so the power would be more adjustable than what this is. This can deliver a pretty definite tone. I have to be careful because it will lift you out of your seat or something. So we use speakers like that in gymnasiums, things like that, in larger areas where there might be a lot of ambient noise, so that we're able to get a clear, concise message across to everybody regardless of, you know, the activity going on as well. So, I don't know if you've ever been in some places where an announcement's going on and everybody's talking and you can't make out what it says? That's what this is made to overcome. Mass notifications now are about clarity, about being able to hear and understand the messages being announced at the time. The devices that we're looking at would look something like this. They would actually be white, and they would say alert on the side again, what's available right now, that I can get at one time. And they would have the yellow lens on it. So this is a wall mount device here, where they make combinations where you can have a double device, where you would have a fire alarm strobe along with an alert strobe that can be married into the same device. So a lot of options, a lot of abilities to change things. Does that help at all? Is there anything else I can answer question wise? Or? Any questions from our board?
Corey? How does this tie in to, like, the local fire police?
It goes to a central station. So again, we get with you guys to figure out exactly when you want to send things to a central station. So if you're doing a, say, a lockdown or something by pushing a button, then we want to go ahead and we want to send that directly to the central station, which contacts the local police or fire, whoever we need to contact, and they send them out directly. So there's no real other interaction than that, but we just need to know what scenario we want to contact. So, again, totally customizable and changeable at any time as well.
Anyone else? Chad?
Thank you, Tom. So the speaker strobe devices that you're showing us, do those replace the current fire alarm? Or do we have them all?
Now, the original, the systems we have are three buildings, which would be the middle school, Oxford Elementary, and Daniel Axford. We already have the EST4 systems in place for fire, so we would just be adding actually a yellow strobe for an addition for those particular buildings. Right now, the rest of them, this is a totally separate standalone system. It would go in the same areas as the general fire alarm system would. But again, it's able to take that over in the future too, because most of your systems are getting pretty aged, and you'll have more than 50% of that new system in place, so it's very easy to convert over after that.
Okay. Couple things. So, looking at the bid, I noticed that the buildings were priced differently from what you're saying here. Some of the equipment is already in there, is already usable, so that accounts for some of those differences?
Correct, correct. Some buildings are from scratch, other ones that we've already done, we've already got wire race waves, we already know exactly where we're going, so it's a lot easier to do. We've already got the equipment in place. We don't have to add panels, we don't have to add amplifiers, we're just adding modules for controls of those strobes is really what we're doing. The other buildings, basically, we have to add it all.
Okay, okay. So the other question I've got right now is, I guess, around training. Is that something that you provide?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Because I mean, obviously, it'll be critical that the staff would know how to operate it.
Yes.
But more than that, or even just as critical, it'd be important for the students to know how to, to know what they're expecting and know how to interact based on what they're hearing.
Correct. You'll probably set up a schedule to do, you know, tests or drills, so everybody's used to what's going to happen. There's also what we call local councils, which are basically just like the head-end panel, which we have, you know, displayed. Now, this is kind of a bigger one. The fire phone wouldn't be needed, that's for like a high-rise. So you'd have a microphone next to the display with some switches and for activation and that. We would have, in other buildings, duplicate ones in different areas that was yet to be determined, so that you would be able to activate it from more than one area. So the main panel would probably be up in the office. The other devices may need to be by where security is or some other place where somebody can easily activate it and access it as need be.
A good visual, I'm sorry. A good visual would be if you went over to Daniel Axford, when you first walk into the lobby, there's a, one of the small enunciators on the left-hand side, and then the main panel is right outside the principal's office. So you have actually full control, you can make the paging from the lobby or from the main panel. And I know Deja, who is, I guess, going to be the principal here pretty soon, she, I quite often get texts from her saying how much she likes the system, and they've, it's really easy to use. Spent a lot of time there, well, only, not only with the installation, but with training and servicing it with staff, so.
Okay.
And they have a similar setup. They have the main panel in the office, enunciator out by the main door.
Okay. So if we could talk about serviceability for a minute, right? One of my, I mean, obviously, it's a, it's a large dollar amount that we're talking. It's a, it's a critical system. So what is the, in your experience with this system, I guess, tell me about the reliability? What does the ongoing maintenance schedule look like, that type of thing?
Extremely reliable. It's one of the reasons we use the Edwards product. It has a extremely, extremely good track record. It's very easy to service, very durable, it's made to be almost fail-safe in the sense where if, say, if CPU fails, then the modules within the panel take over, and they still communicate with each other, and you're still able to do certain functions even without a main CPU. Other panels will sub themselves out to different little networks and continue to work as they're supposed to do. So it's got a real fail-safability, but the longevity of these systems is one of the reasons we use them. This is the EST3, the predecessor to the 4, which just came out a little while ago, and these have been out since the mid-'90s, and there's like thousands of them, and we still, up until 4 came out a couple of years ago, we still installed them. They just have that type of ability. So what they have is downloadable operating codes and everything else, so that if I put, say, an EST3 in today, I would put the new operating codes in it, obviously, but if I go back to one that was put in back in, say, '96, I could download the new operating codes into that and give it all the features and ability of the one that I just put in today. So they really thought through when they made these systems to be able to keep them current without having to, you know, like some systems out there, it's like every couple of years, oh, we can't keep up with this, we're going to have to discontinue and come out with a new model. They don't do that. They basically have an operating code that's downloadable, and they keep pretty much the same thing going for years and years.
Edwards built their platform on their sensor technology, and two versions of the EST panels before this all started using the, that style of sensor technology. And they kept the sensor technology because it was state-of-the-art. It had features in it that is still not even heard of with our competitor panels. So they made everything backwards compatible. Everything, every panel that they went new with, with new displays, the architecture basically stayed the same, but we gave new user features, more ergonomic appeal to it, user friendliness, they improved on that year over year. But all the main components in the back were all backwards compatible, so there was no major reset of a system, if you will. So it's made it affordable. They're UL-listed to use existing wiring in a lot of applications where you need to. It's a cost savings. And the survivability in them is unprecedented. If you, you can Google survivability of the EST4 panel, and you'll be amazed at the different types of networks that you can set these up on. And there's so much flexibility to add things on later if you decide you want to do, you know, specific point alarming, you can do that. It's pretty endless. It's, yeah.
So the regular, the regular maintenance, based on where this conversation is going, I would imagine that there are likely firmware updates being pushed to the system.
Not unless you, you know, unless they mandate it, most of the firmware updates really have nothing to do with safety. They have to do with added features. And if we come out to do something to your panel, we're just going to update it anyway. We don't charge for that, there's no annual fee for that. The only thing that's really, once it's in, that you need to do is do your annual testing. Other than that, they should.
Okay. I guess I just, as long as, I guess, as long as we've got an eye on that.
Yeah.
The other, I guess, maybe my last question, I guess, is really in terms of network vulnerability.
Basically, all fire alarm systems reside on a closed network, just for what you're thinking, so they can't be attacked from outside sources. The EST4 now has a module put in called the, you know, firewall that allows us different abilities. So it allows us to actually connect to the outside world, but prevent any type of ability for any cyber attacks or anything like that. So they've really put in a good shield, a beefed-up thing. So it's basically increasing the amount of abilities to the system, but still keeping it secure and safe, so it can't be hacked.
So your firewall's giving us a tunnel to the fire department, essentially, right?
Yeah, there's multiple ways to communicate to the fire department via central station, but it uses IPv8 technology as opposed to 4 or 6, which is older. And the cybersecurity levels, that was paramount for them because they use these in international airports, you know, a lot of critical, like nuclear power stations, ships. They use them all over the place, though, that is ultra-security conscious about, you know, from the company, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Mary?
Thank you. Though I am nervous when somebody says that, that nobody can hack into the system, because that's not true.
I didn't say that. I said it's extremely difficult, but I'm with you.
Okay.
Anybody, you know, you get somebody smart enough can do anything. But the thing is, is it's kind of a Linux-based system. It's not like your typical Windows stuff that people hack into.
Okay.
So it's all proprietary. So even if they get in, they're not going to know what does what or what can do what. It's really...
And just to expand on what he's saying, by UL standards, you're not allowed to download to a fire alarm-based panel like this?
Okay.
From a remote location. You actually have to get your laptop, plug it in with a cable. That's the only way that'll take an input to change any data in the panel.
Okay.
The systems that we'll be putting in will not reside on a public network whatsoever.
Okay. Have we, we already have the fire systems in three of the buildings, so we've already worked with, I don't know if that's you guys or Sam or somebody, but, so the fire department in Oxford's already working with us on this system?
Oh, yeah.
They're familiar with this?
They know me real well.
Okay. Is that a good thing?
That's a great thing, yep.
Okay.
No, I've trained, I've actually trained their fire department on how to use it. Over at Daniel Axford, I did two different shifts with them.
Okay.
And the fire chief is real, he's real cooperative, real interested in public safety, and of course, this is before everything happened. And I would tell you that we have a great relationship, you know, it's just, we strive for that. Our AHJs are most important to us. So we want to make sure that not only does the customer get what they need, but we have to meet, we have to make the AHJ happy, so.
I'm impressed that it's backwards compatible, you don't find that.
No, you don't.
That's really, that's quite incredible.
We've been selling, I've been using Edwards' system for 20, 30 years. It'll be 30 years this year that I've been actually working with Edwards' equipment. And I've used other equipment, and I just really have no use for it. It's just what ours does.
I've been with Edwards since 1996. We used to actually be part of Edwards, and then our company was sold to a service division, so it became privately owned. And I left like an idiot and went to Siemens for four years, and I couldn't wait to get back to work on equipment that I knew was reliable and definitely user-friendly. And these guys called me to come back about six years ago, and haven't looked back, so.
So when we're, when we talk about maintenance costs, so these are, these units are hardwired with a battery backup?
Mm-hmm.
So those batteries, that's a lot of units that we have to change those batteries in. How, what's the...
Lifespan is three years on batteries. That's recommended to replace.
Okay.
But they've kind of changed the requirement, where it used to be required after a certain amount of years.
Right.
Now, it's basically just replacing it, say...
Right. So when we, like, we inspect, we do all the inspections for the schools. So when our team goes out, and we'll make sure that they're testing the separate systems as well, because it's still a UL-listed system. And what they do is they'll take the batteries, they'll disconnect them from the system, and they'll do an actual load test on them to make sure that they're still able to do the job in the event of a power outage. So by code, we're required to have 24 hours of standby backup. And then after 24 hours of being on the battery, it's mandatory that they operate for 15 minutes in alarm.
Okay.
Dan?
Thank you.
Dan?
Quick question. I'm looking at the brochure, and it says local and remote reporting under connectivity. Do all of the systems, so if we have one here, we have one at DA, do we, if there's an incident, do all those other schools know that something's happening in this building?
They do not, but we can set it up that way. There is a system called Fireworks, which can connect multiple network systems altogether so that we can actually share information between panels and have it come into a central location so you can see everything that's going on as well.
I think that's something as a district we might want to consider having a discussion around, because in the situation, all the schools should know what's going on so that they can take their protocols instead of having to make phone calls from one location. There's a lot of things that need to happen in a split second, and if that's just taken off the plate, it might be something worth having that conversation. And then, what markets is the system typically used in? Is it a school environment, or is it commercial, government, military?
Hospital, to industrial, to schools, office buildings, everywhere. It's basically a customizable system, and it fits virtually any application.
When you're talking mass notification, it's, it's, there's a lot of code written around mass notification and how it has to be set up. If you're going to install one, you have to set it up per the international code, and that's what we follow. I've already installed one other system that's similar, that's a lot like this panel right here. Actually, for a, it's a gun sight manufacturer that makes scopes and stuff for weapons. And they have discrete buttons located throughout the facility, so, and then they have safe, you know, safe rooms and everything, so if they need to. They're very proactive in, you know, in an upset employee situation or whatever it could be. And it works quite well. And so they have, you know, different buttons for different levels. So one level, for example, tells everybody to stay in place, the other one tells them to evacuate the building. So they have like three buildings in the complex, and it's all networked together, so there's three different panels. And it works quite well. We installed that in conjunction with the local authorities. We had the police there, so they know what's happening, they know when they hear that or when they get the call from the central station, that they know how to respond appropriately because they get the message saying that this building has the issue, these two buildings have evacuated, or these two, you know, buildings have locked in place. It's whatever parameters that the facility wants to set up, we can customize it, whatever is best suited for the facility.
And you've heard of state central station quite a bit, and that's, essentially, these systems do not directly connect to police or fire departments because they do not have receiver equipment, nor do they have staff to constantly monitor everything from everybody coming in. So it goes to a central monitoring station that actually verbally will call and talk to them and let them know what's going on. So, and then they have a call list, too, so they can't get a hold of one, they go to the next, and the next. So they have the responses that has to occur. So that would be the central station that syncs in fire alarms the way they require they go.
Dan, did you have another one?
I do, and it's not necessarily for them, so if anybody else has a question for them, then I think it's more so for Ken.
Okay, I have two.
Yep.
Last meeting, someone, one of the board members that's not here wanted to make sure that we are in the elementary schools, thinking about outdoor activities. Have we speakers, whatever, aimed out at our playgrounds in the proposal?
Well, not in the two elementaries that we have, but it, they would easily be added in using something like the hyperspike. They have like an array. That's just an example of the type of audio you would get, but the arrays that they come with, you could put a singular array up in the corner of the playground, and you would definitely have solid coverage for the whole playground. So it's extremely expandable with minimal upgrade.
Okay. All right, so that's not currently in the proposal?
The only, the only one I know for sure, because I haven't seen the layouts from the rest of the system yet, but I know in the high school, we have walked, all the courtyards here have speakers, and those are also going to be in play as well. I say speakers, they have orange strobes here, but there will be speakers where the outdoor orange strobes are.
Okay. All right, so maybe something to be looked at. We're going to have hundreds of these things throughout a building. My security system at home, when I engage it, will tell me if it's, one of my things isn't working.
Correct.
It self-diagnoses. It knows that my front door alarm's not working. Does this system self-diagnose so that we can get a report, or do we only find out that portions of it aren't working when we do a test three months later?
No, the beauty about the fire alarm platform is everything is, in our, in our industry, we call it supervision. So all the wiring, all the devices are supervised, and there's actually a supervisory voltage that always lies on these circuits. It's, it's, there's a resistor at the end of it in most circuits, and that regulates the voltage level to a certain point, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if the voltage level drops or if it increases to the full voltage... So if the voltage level drops or, or if it increases to the full voltage, the panel knows that to differentiate between a short in the wiring, an open in the wiring, um, or a ground. Like if somebody pinched a wire and it's actually on the ground, this will give you the message. And every, every circuit that comes out of this is supervised, even internally. If, let's just say one of these switch displays have a bad switch in it for some reason, somebody pushed it too many times or too hard, it would let you know that that switch module has a bad button. And from a technician's standpoint, we would come out, read the message, replace the device and put the system back to normal.
Okay.
Anything input wise, um, that we put on it is also, they're called addressable and they're interrogated on a constant basis. So anything, uh, that is not responding back goes into trouble or anything that says, hey, I'm not feeling well or whatever, will report to the panel and say, hey, I have an internal fault or something wrong. And if that's what's related to it.
So in a process, then we have to have somebody that's looking at the panel every day.
Okay.
Is that true? We should have someone looking at the panel every day. The panel, or is the panel talking to someone's computer? So...
Yeah, it's possible for that, but then again, it reports it to central station who will call Tony or whoever else is on the...
Yep. So central station will get those messages as well. Thank you. That's what I needed to hear. That's, that's what I needed to hear. Okay.
So even in the middle of the night, you may get a call saying, hey, there's a problem in our system.
Okay. All right. Um, any other questions? Mary?
Yes, we're talking about maintenance and being able to come in and, and ULCs, is that a monthly cost that we incur? Is it a contract?
Uh, there's a contract that we do an annual inspection. We currently do it for all your buildings required by code as well. So just once a year, everything has to be tested just to verify that everything's operational and, um, I'm, just because everything is supervised up to the device, you can't actually supervise a strobe if it burned out or something like that. So that's just why we do a test and we're able to verify everything. But yeah, it's once a year, everything's exercised to make sure it's in good operating condition.
And we always recommend that, um, any facility, whether they have a fire alarm or mass notification, that, you know, it's a good idea to run drills monthly, if not quarterly at the very least. Um, because, um, I was formerly in the Navy and I can tell you that we, you do what you're trained to do when you train. And, um, people respond when they know what they're supposed to do. It's like growing up and having earthquake drills in California or tornado drills here. You know what you do. You hear that noise, you get under the desk or you, you know, go to your point of, of area of rescue. Um, so I, I can't emphasize that, you know, the, the district's involvement with training, uh, will be probably the biggest factor of all once you get the notification. So...
Gentlemen, thank you very much. You probably can start packing that up if you want. And he's got a question for probably Ken or Sam?
Probably for Ken.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I want to ask the question or more of a statement without kind of putting it in a, in a, in a statement that is accusatory of any way, shape or form. So, um, there were comments, um, that night locks, didn't know how to put night locks with teachers, substitute long-term subs. Um, now we're going to have a multiple of different, um, signals and strobes and notifications. I guess what I, what I would like to see us delve into is what's best practices for everybody understanding that this is what you need to do. And is it, if, if somebody's a substitute, do they sign off? Boom, I've signed off. I know how this system works. I know how a night lock works. I know that this, I, I know all these steps that we're supposed to do. And then one step further, contractors that come in, you know, they may come in and do some work in the building and, you know, we make sure they have the Alice training, but do they know how to work the mechanisms that we have? And then finally, students. We can have all the things in place and if our students aren't familiar with how to operate them or what to do in an emergency situation, you, you, why have them?
Yeah. So...
Yeah. So, you know, there's several steps that we take. With substitutes, the, the issue you have nowadays is that because the economy's going so well, quite honestly, the substitutes change over quite a bit. We, the ones that are here consistently are trained. The problem is, is quite often there are new subs quite often coming into the ranks as we try to recruit and so forth and trying to keep up with that. But, um, that's something that we have down as well too, to make sure that as we go along in the future, that, that all subs have that knowledge. And it, it's quite simple. It's not very complex to actually put, utilize the night lock, but under duress. Obviously, it becomes a lot more difficult and that's what we learned. As well as when we do drills, we're required to do ten drills a year. Um, different types of drills that are split up. It used to be just all fire drills. Now they've split them up. I don't remember exactly off the top of my head. Uh, I think it's like five or six fire drills and then a couple, two or three lockdowns and so forth. And then, um, tornado as well or shelter in place. So there's all these, those requirements. And as part of that, and that's part of the moving forward, is allowing kids to practice with putting the night lock in so that they understand, like I said, it, you know, under duress, it's a lot different, uh, trying to do just the simple task that's at hand. So, uh, we're trying to, we'll, we'll make sure of that. The vendors are a little bit more difficult because many times they come after hours. That we usually don't do too much vendor servicing during the day, but it's usually after hours. But at the same time, trying to come up with a plan for that would be, uh, something appropriate, even if it's just handing written instructions that they can look at on the way in. Because a lot of times they come in and, and there isn't a lot of staff there. Or it's Tony and his crew setting them up and so forth. The other thing you had asked about strobes, um, and affecting some of the children, we generally know who those children are. Um, and the reason why we are looking at the audio visual obviously is to make sure that the notification is widespread. Uh, we have a lot of kids at the older levels that have earbuds in and so forth. And we're trying to make sure that they have that notification as they're walking around, that they can see that younger kids. A lot of chaos a lot of times. Uh, you know, I just attended the circus among us over at OES and it was extremely loud and energetic and everything in there. So the, the added, um, security or warning that the audio visual would, uh, provide is, is necessary. And so this is really that output device that would allow for that communication to occur. And it's a monitored panel. Um, you know, and I used to use the one at OMS. Um, and I know why Tisha is texting, uh, constantly about how happy she is with the new panel. It was extremely complicated and he had to cross-reference two or three things to find exactly where the fault was and everything. And now the system is extremely well done and, um, very easy to communicate with and work with. Um, and that's obviously important in, in critical situations as well too. And then the last thing, just to kind of address as well too, is just, uh, we had had a discussion this, uh, was it this week, Monday? Yeah. On Pre-Plan Live as well and kind of closing the loop. Sam, did you want to discuss that a little bit? Uh, and then we can let them move on?
Yeah, absolutely. So as, uh, Ken just mentioned, we had a discussion, um, with, uh, the, the individuals from, obviously as you've seen here, from Eagle Security as well as, um, obviously, um, uh, the electric company. I'm, uh, the name of the firm right now escapes me. Um, I apologize.
Clement, Clements.
Thank you. Clements Electric. They were in the room. We were discussing the original pre-planned, uh, diagrams as well as all of the, um, information that we received when we were doing the install, uh, or when the electric company at that time was doing the install of the Pre-Plan Live system. And so there, there is, at the end of the day, there is the ability for us to integrate to a certain degree if we would like to integrate the two systems. Um, at a very basic level, there just needs to be basically a receiver, um, uh, that was put on basically the panel, uh, the fire panel or this panel at this mass notification system for it to talk to one another. Um, so we, we're going to look through this more diligently to see if that's something that we want to do. And if we do want to do that and make the two systems speak with one another, how will we roll that out from a communication and a training perspective with the schools? That's going to be the key. So we need to talk about this further is the bottom line. But there is the potential for us to utilize the pre-planned system in conjunction with this mass notification system as well.
And just to clarify, the, the Pre-Plan Live is a, is an input system where it notifies and there's a panel that it goes to currently. The advantage would be that it would be monitored by the company and therefore that would, uh, instant notifications as well too. So they could either push the button if they're unable to, you know, they would have two ways in which to contact the, the office to make sure there's emergency either that way. Or they would be able to pick up the phone and dial the emergency line, which also works as well. And you can obviously relay more information. But you never know if the person's unable to get to it or so forth. So this is, it offers a second way. Uh, and would be able to then go over to the fire panel and then, so to speak, close the loop, which then would be the output of what that was.
Right.
Um, and it would also allow the, if the button's pushed, to communicate with the app. Um, that could be pushed out to all administrators and, and the signal as well too. So it kind of makes it so it's a, one system. The other thing to bring up as well too, they're really, you know, as far as things go in training, it's really more the office staff that gets trained on the system. Uh, it is not the entire teaching staff because they are not going to be using the panel and, uh, and the, of the audio visual, the only thing they need to know. And that's the part of training and the drills and why we do that and why we have an operations manual, um, for emergency plans, the EOP, um, that allows us to communicate what the different strobes would be, what the different sounds, what the commands would be. So it'd be systematic across the district as well too. Um, so that's the part the teachers would have to know. Um, the office staff would be able to use, would have to know the other end. But quite honestly, with some of the systems, especially the older ones and that, it'd be much simpler with this new system. So it's an upgrade quite a bit.
Corey?
I know back when we had the construction, uh, going on last summer, um, we had discussed a margin of error where you guys could approve a certain amount, you and Tim, which would now be you and Ken, to say, hey, if changes have to be made, we can do that. You know, we're talking about adding speakers in playgrounds or things like that. Would this still apply or if they come back and say, hey, it's five grand to add to the playground, is that something that has to come back to the board? Or can we put?
No.
Some margin of error into that where they can say, do it. For that, do it.
So, so the, the difference is, is that the competitive bidding threshold for the state of Michigan for public entities such as ours is twenty-six thousand, I believe, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, something around that level. Anything that's at that amount or above, we do have to get multiple bids and then bring it to the board for approval. Okay? When it's something like a piece of equipment such as that we're speaking of right there. Uh, if it's less than that, actually Ken has the ability to approve it by himself. I currently have the ability to approve half of the amount. So approximately thirteen thousand dollars and change, myself in my own position for things such as equipment, that kind of thing. So in short, depending upon the level of spend over and above a contract price that we're talking about this evening, we have that ability to not have to ask for board approval just to go ahead and do it.
Okay.
Okay?
That's what I wanted to avoid is this coming to a screen.
Yeah. We'll make sure the elementary playgrounds. I thought Jill had said, I thought that she had said they were...
I think so. Again, the gentleman, you know, he wasn't as well versed into, you know, what the diagram showed within the bid packet as well. Um, but at the same time, we'll make sure that those are there. We, we need to. That's, that's an obvious. So...
Dan?
Thank you. Two things. Number one, to the point about the, the speakers. If we're talking about a five, six, seven thousand dollar bill, I mean, being in sales, I throw that in. I mean, that's, that's an ask that we got to say, hey, can, can, we're going to spend north of a million dollars. Can you throw in a few speakers?
Right.
That's number one. Number two, um, we were talking about integrating the systems and do we integrate it with Pre-Plan Live? And then now all of a sudden, we're, are we looking at creating redundancy in the system?
No.
Um, my concern is, is as I read through Jason's report, that was one of the concerns of the operation of that system. Who knew how to use it? How do, you know, what was it? I want to, I want to have that, um, discussed before we integrate things. Because I don't want to build too many things in the...
Sure.
You've already got too many things going on in a, in a fire situation or, um, a November thirtieth incident. Let's not add one more thing that it's just redundancy that, let's get that off the table if we need to get it off the table and really examine that.
And that's a great point, Dan. But I will add this, that, um, in my mind, the way that I think about it, it is, it is not a redundancy. It's a different way to potentially notify of a situation within a school. What Pre-Plan Live was intended to do originally was to notify those inside the school and administration of a critical incident in a specific location within one of our buildings. It wasn't originally, and I won't say that that didn't change, but it wasn't originally designed to go externally. It was our hope and it was told to us on several occasions that there was an opportunity for that to happen. And what I mean specifically by that was that our Oakland County Sheriff's Department, our village police, the fire chief, they would be able to obviously get notifications as well if they had the app on their phone. And that is the piece that I think that we ended up not getting in totality. But it wasn't part of the original bid specs on the system to begin with. It was, it was a, a nice to have that we thought we were going to get in the end and it didn't come to fruition.
It does work for administrators, that, that part of it, the notification part. It's the fact that, uh, getting the county sheriff and the village to actually put the app on and carry it. And we have to go back and look at this in totality and see whether or not before we integrate it, we just wanted to see first, no decision has been made. We wanted to see first if it was capable. That was the first checkbox we had to do. And then we had to talk about, well, okay, now is it like, is this something we want to pursue? And we've just begun those discussions. And like we said, we're also looking at like, does it close the loop? Does there, is there redundancy? There's not. Like I said, one's more of an input, one's more of an output.
Absolutely.
Um, and it is a second way in which to, to notify. And the, the, the button was to be activated in case of mass violence or...
Correct.
Or violent is, uh, issues and so forth. So that's where we're trying to see about before we make that final decision, what are the capabilities and what will it take to integrate the two systems and make a complete circle out of it.
So Dan, I, I just want to say to you that I agree. You and I and Heather are the only three board members that were in existence when we voted on Pre-Plan Live. And I remember the conversations in the LGI room. Corey, you might have been because you came in as a, um...
I was, that was one of the first things I was in on.
Yeah. So there is some work being done to lay that down and find out about that system prior to doing anything with it. So just be sure that that's happening.
Absolutely.
Yeah. We're going to be meeting with Pre-Plan Live here in just, uh, in a week or two as well too.
Will that be rolling up to us to make the decision or will that be a cabinet?
We have to wait until, do we see what we see? But we will come back to you. And before we make a final decision, involve you in that.
Yep. Because I recall specifically asking, and I love the idea that instant notification to the outside world. And I love the fact that there was an opportunity for them to have access to our cameras.
That's correct.
And that works as well.
That was what we, what I was under the understanding was what we paid for.
And, and that works. That is a live, and that's a live camera feed.
Correct.
By the way. Yes.
Yeah. So we've got to go back and approach all of this.
I just, I'm not saying anything about it. I just want to make sure that we understand.
Absolutely.
How everything integrates.
Yep. And we'll bring it back to you for sure.
Okay. All right. Anything else for, uh, Mary?
Hi, Sam. Thank you for the information.
Absolutely.
Can you remind everybody where this money's coming from?
This is general funded or capital project funded for next year?
Well, and it was part of the state, uh, when we originally, when Mr. Thrawn went up to the state and asked for, uh, financial assistance. It was one of the items mentioned in...
That is correct.
Uh, that package as well as it's mentioned in when they eventually, I don't know if it's in the most recent because they gave us a lot more flexibility. But it was mentioned in all the, uh, legislation up until that point.
That's right. But keep in mind, I didn't bake in any, um, of the, you know, the, the money that we intend or anticipate receiving from, um, the legislature, Governor Whitmer. Uh, that does contain specific language regarding funding for this. Um, because again, I, I want to see it before I budget it. And so, um, I am considering this, uh, we are considering this as part of a general fund expenditure for next year or a capital project fund expenditure for next year if we ultimately do not get the funding. So, okay? Starting July first. That's correct.
As well, we applied today for, and I keep getting them mixed up, so I apologize. COPS?
Uh, that's, yeah, the stop grant.
Stop grant. One of them. I always want to get it backwards every single time.
That's right.
I seem to guess it wrong every single time. But we did apply today, uh, for funding for the audio... But we did apply today, uh, for funding for the audio visual mass notification system and which category it falls.
That's right, yeah. So it's, yeah, there's, there's another funding potential there as well, so.
Tom, may, may I, one more?
Yes.
Since we're talking about funding. So if we do receive a grant and if we do get language in there that adds this in, even though we have it earmarked out of the general fund, we can flip those dollars so you...
Yes.
We don't have to necessarily say, oh, we, we budgeted for general fund and now we have to stick with that. We have some flexibility there.
That's correct. Because of the language that we seen as a cabinet and maybe I think that was shared with you, uh, from the legislature, um, that went on to supposedly Governor Whitmer to sign about two Fridays ago, that I still haven't heard.
Yeah, it's, it's squared away.
It's squared away. Um, that basically is carved out within there. And so, um, I did not bake in, as a, as a reminder, I did not bake in any of that revenue. But that revenue is considered state revenue and that revenue would be going directly into the general fund. And so because of that, we would be able to use that as general fund money as we so chose, especially that, that language, it's carved out for specific, uh, threat notification.
All right, very good. Any more discussion? All right, well, we have put the motion on the floor and we had support. So I guess it's time to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we're going back on, in our agenda to item number four, Board of Education Matters. And, uh, the first one is, uh, the resolution that we looked at opposing Let Michigan Kids Learn voucher. Um, and you probably have in front of you, um, I believe Angela, we took the West Bloomfield, um, because of the language was a little bit more precise and, 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 um, so we, we took it and modified it with Oxford Community Schools language and titles and put it in appropriate places. Uh, but this is the same, uh, resolution, um, opposing the voucher initiative. And ultimately seeking that if they get the signatures to put it on a ballot and let the Michigan, um, the community, the state, um, vote to decide. So would someone like to put the motion on the floor? We can have some discussion. Mary?
Move to approve the Let My Kids Learn Resolution.
Support? Dan, support? All right, discussion. Uh, Dan and then Corey?
So as I watched last week, I first have to thank Mary for her detailed, um, information on that resolution and how it was brought up. But I will say this, it's, um, it is a question that I think all people in education, quite frankly, everybody should be, um, thinking about. And here's why. You can have whatever opinion you want on public education, but I'm gonna tell you this. I have two children. One was a pretty good learner, one, he struggled. He went to first grade at St. Joe's. I went to St. Joe's. My brothers all went to St. Joe's. I'm not gonna bore you with all the details, but he struggled. I went to Sister Teresa and I said, Sister, what can we do to help him? She said, send him to a public school. We don't have the resources here. We don't have the resources to fit what he needs in order to get the education that he deserves. And it, it really was tough for us, but we understood that the funding is greater at a public school entity. So when you start talking about, well, we're gonna give you a voucher for this and you can go where you wanna go and you can go to a private school, you can go to a charter school, we all don't play by the same rules. We have the same guidelines that we have to focus on, but public schools are the most regulated entity probably in the country. We have to spend our, our money a certain way based on what the laws are. Private institutions, charter schools, charter schools still a little bit the same way, but they have a little bit of leeway. That is a business. If I open a school tomorrow, I can say, you know what, it's too cold in here, I'm gonna, or it's too cold in here, I'm gonna turn the, the air conditioning off because it's gonna save me over totality of maybe $20,000 a year. That goes into the profit loss of that business. Same thing in the winter time. Oh, it's, it's a little cold out, we're not gonna take the temperature above sixty, sixty, you know, eight, sixty-nine degrees. They have that flexibility. Public schools, there's regulations on how things work. You have to provide an environment that is a learning environment. Now, that may or may not be a, a, a great example, but there are a plethora of rules in which public schools need to follow that other schools do not have to. They have the leeway. So I, I just want everybody to understand that that is something that we have to consider when we're voting on this, when we're making this kind of decision, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Corey?
Uh, just from a parliamentary, uh, note, I almost think that the motion needs to be changed.
Okay.
Because the way it was said was move to approve the Let My Kids Learn Resolution. And I think it needs to say, move to approve the resolution opposing the Let My Kids Learn Initiative. Because this one sounds like we are supporting the Let My Kids Learn Resolution.
So use more of the title of the resolution, resolution opposing.
Yes.
So why don't you move, uh, to amend and, and restate a, restate a, um...
Uh, move to amend the initial motion.
Is there a second?
To read.
Hold on, is there a second? To amend that motion?
Second.
Dan? Second, discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? All right, what would you word it as?
Move to approve the resolution opposing the Let My Kids Learn Initiative.
Say it one more time?
Move to approve the resolution opposing the Let My Kids Learn Initiative.
Is there a second? Chad, a second? Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. We're now to be, uh, three-year plan data presentation from Superintendent Weaver.
All right, first of all, I gotta get down there and it's not just me, it's gonna be pretty much all of them.
You're all looking at a slide that says informing the three-year plan? Thank you. So, so are we.
So tonight's goals are to share the actual data, not interpretation. We're gonna be, so the way this process we've, we've set up is that back in April, um, we surveyed quite a few groups, uh, in several different areas, social, emotional learning, mental health, um, staff retention and, uh, wellness and retention and safety and security. And we didn't, every group wasn't ser, uh, surveyed in every area. We did areas that would bear, pertain to them or that they would have knowledge of. And so what we're here tonight to, to do is just to kind of present the data. We, uh, have been meeting with, uh, the National Center for School Safety. We started last week. Um, we met again today. We have a plan to meet again on Thursday. Um, and then as well too, the following Tuesday, and we plan on having a meeting with them once a week as we develop the plan. They have a lot of resources. We've used like a lot of the resources that they refer to in other areas, not necessarily, necessarily directly through them, but we have used resources that they recommend from their website. So they're, they're an excellent resource. Uh, so we're making use of them. Uh, they've been very helpful as we've started and we've shared all this data that you see and the public can see in the, um, in the packet, we've also shared with them as well too. And so that's the, they're going to over the next couple of days or next week, help us look at it. And then as well too, we shared some actual raw data with them, the actual responses. It's all private, all the identifying information either wasn't collected or it was removed. And so they're gonna go through and they have some other ways in which they said they would like to present the data as well too. So we're o, open to that and looking at that, uh, that interpretation or that presentation of data that they'll be doing with us. That will be happening, like as we said, through the month of July. Then in August, at the first board meeting, we'll present, um, if the plan is acceptable and so forth, then we'll present to the community as well too in so format, close to a town hall or a presentation format. Um, what we're gonna do is look at some areas of strength, areas to address, improve, and some themes that we noticed, but really trying to stay away from real interpretation, um, of the data and trying to really just kinda set the stage for things. And then we come back, you'll see more of a tie into things as in August when we say, well, this is what the data said and this is why we did this, kind of thing. Okay? Any questions? All right. Since Jill's not here tonight, I'm not gonna read all of the statistics and stuff. Uh, you can read those, um, I'll give you a minute. So some of the themes that we see coming out of this, and like I said, this is high level and if you really wanna see all of the data, like I said, it's all available. It's just go into the board packet and you can download it as attachments. Uh, it's in there in that, in, in a format. It's easier to read. We didn't give the raw data to, to you necessarily and you can actually see it in chart format for the most part, so that it's a little easier to interpret. But we do see some themes, uh, like we've already talked about, practicing with night locks, analysis procedures. Um, we'd also like to restart receiving information when their parents do. We've done a much better job, not always perfect at it, but we've done a much better job at the high school level is where this pertains to. Uh, sharing information, especially as, uh, certain things happen in the school that they need to be aware of. Uh, and then as well, interested in weapons detection systems, uh, the different groups expressed that, or the students did as well. And that's why you also see some of the, you know, the Evolve pilots as well as the, uh, Zero Eyes. Here's another slide, this is... Okay. Uh, this is another slide, this is what the parents were saying. Um, and yeah, I'm not, like I said, I'm not gonna read the actual statistics. We just pulled a few for tonight's presentation. You can look at those. So some themes, uh, availability, district safety, uh, policy, security and supervision and availability of personnel, all scored above 50% in the very satisfied, satisfied categories. Probably the biggest thing was the not sure, not, do not know. Uh, there was quite a bit of that, uh, as we went through the surveys and that. So that just speaks to, you know, that constant communication. I mean, we've communicated, uh, quite a bit on all of these things, um, but it still goes to the fact of it doesn't really become pertinent to you until you actually are looking for it in that aspect sometimes. And so we've just gotta continue to make sure we're communicating as we move forward so that, uh, our parents, our community know, uh, what is there and what they can find not only in policy, but in other areas as well, uh, on our website. Um, we only had, there was one question where it was below the 50%. We're very satisfied or satisfied and, and we're certainly not touting that 50% is the benchmark or anything. That was just the observation that the group, by the way, these observations were, uh, created not by cabinet, but by all of the ad team. So we had an ad team, uh, in May, uh, that we got together and broke up into ran, into, into groups, uh, tried to get different levels, different, um, areas of expertise together to review the data. So this is not like just cabinet going through and doing this. This is all the building administrators participating into different groups and so forth. So everybody broke up into think groups of three or four. Uh, and here you see as well, unsure neutral responses are between 20 and 30% for nearly all questions. We've, like I said, we've got a lot of communicating to do, a lot of making sure people, you know, some of it is the terminology that you use as well too. I, uh, very much saw that as a principle and have seen it since as well, is one person calls one technique this, the other person calls it this, and you don't realize you're actually speaking about the same, same thing. So, uh, that could be some of it is just being consistent with our language. It all comes back to us in the end. You know, we have the primary responsibility of communication. It's important for the community to do their part to look for it, to, especially and to read it when we send it out, but it's really to make sure as well too that we're communicating clearly. Um, as well too, the suggestion in addition of metal detectors, parents also with the ammunition sniffing dogs. And that's where, you know, in the, uh, the letter to Nestle as well as, uh, as the board knows as well, that we are pursuing that and, and we feel that, uh, it was important for us to have our own dog, that it be one of our train, one of our train staff as well. And Mr. Work will be taking that on and that dog can, uh, obviously will be here primary, but it primarily amount of time, but it will also move about the district as needed. More for emergencies, I would imagine it'll be stationed here, uh, most of the time, if not all. Mental health, I believe.
Mr. Work? Will kinda, will go through those?
Good evening. I'm going to review and share the survey results from, uh, the mental health sections of our surveys. Uh, starting first with our parents. I'll give you a moment to look through the data from the areas of strength and the areas to improve. Uh, many of the questions I'll note used a Likert scale, uh, ranging from high to moderate high to prevalent in the middle, down to moderate low and then low. And I'll give you a moment here. So some of the themes and needs that popped up, uh, just looking at the raw data. Uh, parents were asked to rank the, uh, mental health efforts. Uh, they were looking for the school to make effort in. Uh, and in order, they ranked protocols for mental health concerns, uh, protocols for the staff, that is. Uh, second ranked was staff training and third ranked was student education. Uh, similar question, um, parents were asked to rank the order, um, of what they felt was most important to address with student mental health. Uh, and so there is some redundancy here with this question, but number one ranked was staff training, followed by student training and then parent training. And after that was greater access to service, uh, that's service for students. And fifth was additional staffing for the schools, of course, to support the students. And so in summary, parents, um, felt that they had received information and guidance of how to recognize warning signs, uh, but would like additional training and resources moving forward. And parents showed a desire for increased communication and additional staff and student training on mental health management or support. And so now switching over to the mental health section of the surveys for our staff, um, you'll see quite a few similarities in the results here. Again, I'll give you a moment to read through the data of strengths and the areas to improve. And once again, using, uh, with many of the questions, the same Likert scale. And so I'm sure you can see some of the similarities already. Uh, staff as well, same question, uh, or questions were asked to rank, uh, what mental health effort, uh, or efforts they felt were most important for the schools to make. And again, leading off first, protocols for mental health concerns, uh, that's staff protocols, followed by staff training and then student education. And then once again, uh, they were asked to rank, um, the schools' needs in order of importance to support student mental health. And in a slightly different order as the parent ranking, it goes staff training, parent training, and then student training, uh, followed by additional staffing. That moved up one spot in their ranking. Uh, and then fifth, greater access to service. Uh, again, that's service and support for students. So some themes, uh, staff felt that parents had received info and guidance of recognizing the warning signs, uh, but valued having additional trainings and resources. They had that same sense and they also felt there was a strong need to provide additional behavioral health resources, sources for both students and parents. And those were the two summaries and review of the... And those were the two, uh, summaries and review of the mental health sections.
Okay, and there were three areas for, um, social emotional learning, um, there were, uh, for parents and guardians, staff and as well as, uh, students, so the first screen in front of you is for parents and guardians, and, um, I'll kind of pause again to, to let you read those, and then we'll talk a little bit about the themes. When we consider social emotional learning, um, there are really five large competencies or big competencies that we're considering, so when you're looking at questions like recognize their emotions, their strengths and weaknesses, that would fall under like a competency of self-awareness, um, awareness of others, or, um, personal responsibility, decision-making, so, the questions were aimed at getting under those larger umbrellas. The themes here for parents and guardians, parents and guardians would like opportunities to learn how to support social emotional learning at home, many parents and guardians, um, are not aware of the social emotional learning that happens within our classrooms, and, um, a positive thing here is that parents and guardians are aware of point people that their students can go to for support. This is from the teacher perspective, I worked on this one and I was a little ambitious with all the statistics I provided, sorry, so I'll give you a little bit longer to, to read these. So, here, excuse me, teachers feel students receive the supports they need, and I really think that's a testament to our MTSS, um, system or multi-tiered system of support, teachers feel there's a trusted adult for students to go to for help with personal or school problems, um, but we recognize through various questions that professional learning is needed, uh, for teachers, so they identified the need for themselves. And then finally, um, this data represents, uh, social emotional learning from the high school students', uh, perspective, so again, I'll pause to let you read the areas of strength and areas of improvement. So, some themes from the students, they, they feel they have strong empathy and perspective taking skills, they feel they need help with necessary skills for course success or success in their classes, um, and a portion of our students do not feel connected to their peers, that's an area of improvement for us.
Good evening, um, so in the area of, uh, staff wellness and retention, uh, we, we surveyed, um, our employees around, uh, staff wellness, and the, the survey that we conducted really focused on, on four key areas, and those areas were, uh, physical well-being, emotional well-being, career well-being, and financial well-being, and there was a clear pattern in, in the data, uh, that we found that, uh, fifty percent of employees ranked emotional well-being as their top priority, and so, areas that we're thinking about is stress management, resiliency, positive thinking, coping skills, mindfulness, mental health, um, so certainly no surprise, uh, that that was the, the highest area. Uh, the second highest area was, um, physical well-being, thirty-six percent of employees, uh, ranked that as their most significant area of need, and they're talking in that area, it's physical activity, nutrition, uh, sleep, preventative exams, biometric screenings, um, things of that nature. Um, and then the two other areas that saw the least significant, uh, areas of importance were the financial well-being, uh, which is talking about budgeting, debt management, credit management, retirement, and then, uh, that was eight percent and then six percent at, uh, career well-being, um, talking about career pathing, communication, teamwork, skill building, time management, and, and things of that nature. Um, along with identifying the areas of need, um, employees were asked to identify a variety of different activities that were of importance to them, and so, the top emotional well-being activities of interest was, uh, stress management programs onsite, um, gratitude, inner appreciation, journals, initiatives, um, emotional well-being applications as well as counseling. The top physical well-being activities were fitness reimbursements, um, healthy eating activities, physical activity and individual, uh, challenges, uh, top financial well-being activities was tuition support, seminars and webinars, and counseling services, and then the top career well-being activities were personal goals, seminars or well-beings, and leadership training, and so, when we took all of those different activity interests, um, and, and aggregate those, the top areas overall, uh, were a fitness reimbursement, healthy eating activities, and wellness coaching, and so, um, it was, it was great that we saw sixty-six percent of our employees, uh, who indicated they were extremely likely or somewhat likely to participate in well-being activities that were offered by the district, um, and we had a significant number of people, eighteen respondents, who expressed interest in being on a committee next year, and so, I think that's a great starting point, um, to be able to engage well-being committee with diverse representation across the district, and so, we're gonna be taking this, um, this data to kind of inform our plan moving forward, and our two key focus areas going into next year are going to be that emotional well-being and physical well-being, so that's gonna be our key, key areas of focus. Thank you. And just to wrap that up too as well, uh, you know, one of the things that we've done, Lori, Laura, sorry, Azoni, uh, the new recovery coordinator, she is one of the areas that we first have her concentrating on as, uh, is with staff and trying to get them, uh, in a better, uh, mental state as far as well-being, and trying to help them, uh, this summer, so that they're in a better place to be able to help students, uh, when we come back in the fall, uh, we are also just to, you know, it's not like we're, uh, not doing something for students, we are working with a parent group, uh, as well as we recently put out some positions for what we call SEL or relationship building positions, uh, that will work this summer to host some like open gym, art activities and stuff like that, to give, uh, kids a chance to, if, uh, they got nothing going on, to come up to maybe the school at all levels, we'll have one for elementary, middle school and high school as well too, so that's something we've done, and that's through Esser Funds, we were able to, to fund that as well, so. Wondered if you had any questions, um, I think we're at the end?
Ken, a question that I have, I may have missed it, is of the, of the categories of staff, parents and students, what percentage responded?
So, I'll have to ask, uh, um, the groups, they were all, they all responded in the different areas statistically high enough that they, the, the data is valid, so it's that point, I would say that, uh, trying to remember, the, um, safety one had quite a high number in, uh, the different areas, both students and staff, I don't know the exact, I can give you that.
I don't need that now, could you, could you, could you work with, uh, your administrator, adminis, ad team, and I'd like to know how many students were surveyed, how many responded in these, in the different categories, how many staff members were surveyed, how many responded in the categories, because statistically, that makes a difference, I, I mean, that's an important.
Yeah.
Denominator.
It is, just like, to some degree, yes it is, always is in the end, but, uh, is as well too though, like, we made sure that we had gotten enough, I think the mental health one was one of the ones that was a little bit lower, uh, as far as the participation was up to.
Anybody else have any questions for Ken or comments? Uh, Cory?
Um, yeah, I've got a, I've got a few, this is just the data, this isn't the three-year thing that we're...
No, that's just the data, we'll be working in July to create the plan with the NCSS, we'll be working, giving us input, kind of creating it along with us, uh, as we go, giving us guidance and so forth, um, we're filling them in on some of the things that we've already done, trying to get them up to speed, uh, that's what we've been working on, as well as they're sharing what areas of, uh, expertise they have, and what areas and how they break down when they approach, uh, school safety, because it's not just like physical safety, uh, stuff you put in place, and drills and that, it's, uh, it's also about the school culture, um, it, it's wellness and mental health, I mean, it's all those SEL, I mean, it's all those different aspects, and they've, they've actually given us quite a list of things and stuff like that, and so, we'll be sharing kind of what in those areas we have, and what then they'll also be sharing, then, okay, these are resources you wanna look at, and then we'll be building the plan through the month of July.
Cause there were a couple things that, as I read through this, kinda jumped out and made a bunch of notes that, quite honestly, were a little concerning to me personally was, like, uh, on the safety and security students, fifty percent of the students are sufficiently prepared for an emergency, so the first question that I ask is, did we train them, or did they not pay attention during training? Because, I mean, if we went through and here's Alice, here's how this works, here's how this works, I would have expected that number to be substantially higher.
Yeah, I, you also gotta remember too, that quite honestly, after November thirty, uh, because of the mental state of staff, students, um, at the school, like, we did not go through the drill, like, that was, like, we were not ready to do that, and so, we held up, now, this year coming up, we're not gonna get the same type of waiver or clearance, we're gonna have to start slowly integrating those drills back in, going through, preparing them, and that'll have to be a long, like, prior to us running that first actionable drill, which we won't probably use the system that you saw tonight for the first one, but what we'll have to do is, we'll have to start, and this is, you know, some of the advice we got from Harpland and a few of the other schools as well too, is you gotta start communicating, you know, like, two, three weeks in advance, and you gotta do it often, get everybody prepared, have people talk it through, and the first time you actually do it, you do it through talking with the kids, so that they are able to control their emotions, control where they're at, keep that, um, that self-control that is needed, uh, to get themselves through the first time, because they're gonna have, we're gonna have to start moving people back through these, we've got a new group of kids, the, obviously the incoming ninth graders, they need to be trained, they need to be, they need to know where the exits are, they need to, you know, know what the systems are, as well as this system is going to be new, so we're gonna have to, as we talk them through, would be to talk them through if you see the yellow stroke, if you see this, so that they know as well too, so that we can prepare them for this, like, that's the advice we got from all of the schools, is that when you actually go and start doing the drills again, you really gotta walk them through the, the process step by step, and you've gotta take them through, it was recommended by all, every school that we talked to, uh, that you do it verbally the first time, um, so that, and make sure parents know in advance, couple of weeks, do the providing and pay off, an hour before, so that everybody, it doesn't catch anybody by surprise, and you don't have, um, uh, a panic attack or anything like that, and it's still possible to have something studied as well too, even through all of that, but we are, like I said, gonna have to do that, and with great care, uh, and as well too, making sure on those days that we have trauma counselors, additional ones here as well, um, so in case we do have an adverse reaction, and then we're able to have staff here to help and, and so forth. If those kids aren't ready for it, as well too, by the advanced notification, then there's always the, you know, the family can make that decision and say that, you know, child won't be there that day, if they need to, if they're, if they're at that point in their recovery.
Yeah, and a couple, a couple other things that, that kinda jumped out, like, eighty-five percent of teachers indicate that students are receiving the support they need, but you go to the next page and it says forty-nine percent of students say that they can't explain how they feel, forty-seven say they do not ask for help, and fifty-two say they do not interact with their counselor, so, to me, those are kinda contradicting each other, and if you look through the theme of all of this, it's getting staff more counseling training, if you will, and quite honestly, that concerns me, because we have teachers that got into a profession to teach, and we're putting more and more burden on them to become counselors? I mean, counselors go through and get a master's or doctorate in counseling, and we're not putting that burden on teachers, if I was Jim Gibbons, I'd be sitting in a negotiation saying, six figures for every one of these teachers, if you're gonna make counselors out of them.
Always out watching.
But I'm just saying, we, we're putting more and more, and we're talking about longevity, and how do we keep teachers, we're burning them out.
Yeah.
Well, this needs to go back to counselors and let teachers teach.
There is, there is a lot of demands, but the, that stu, that teacher is important, the, the point of contact for most kids, the initial, um, as well too, and as well we are changing, we, as we went along into April and May, we changed the model and the approach that we were using, and just started getting into that, as you recall too, we had a little bit of changeover of staff that occurred in the counseling department, uh, that occurred towards the end of the year, so there was a bit, but even then, we still went in and we used a, um, it's from the NASP, an approach called Prepare, which is a more proactive approach, which as we start out the school year, we will be implementing, and that's one of the main, um, areas that we'll be working with the new counselors, as well as Doug Barlow, the executive director, which is, that's why we added that position as well too, is to give the guidance counseling and the SEL slash FSLs, which are the family school liaisons, more of a backbone structure and guidance and help with that professional development as well too. So, some of the stuff, I'll be honest, I mean, some of the, like, stuff that are gonna, is gonna be in the three-year plan, we had to start already, and we knew we'd be doing that, because we wanted to make sure we were hitting the peak hiring season, but yes, there is a lot on teachers' plates, but if you share that, like, we did the mental health first aid, uh, which helps teachers identify those high-level indicators, um, as well too, on some of that, uh, that helps then filter kids that need to go down, because what we found out is just like adults many times, we wanna sometimes muscle through things versus admit that we may need some help at times, um, and so forth, and they don't wanna, you know, get up in front of their peers, and that, so they wouldn't identify, and so that's where Prepare comes in, it kinda, it changes and flips that model a little bit, so it allows kids to identify in a way that, um, doesn't single them out as, as much, there's always gonna be some, there's, you can't remove it completely, but also it allows staff to identify some kids, and not only teachers, but counselors, cause they're in the room delivering the training, and they're able then to go back and then call that student down when it's more appropriate time, and to start talking with them, talk with the parents, make sure that they, you know, it seems like, hey, we're not at the point where we might think we might be, or you, do you have, you know, and have that conversation with the parent, and make sure that they're there, because the counselors aren't therapists either, and even the clinicians that we have, they are meant for, uh, like a stopgap measure in that regard, they're not meant to be any long-term type of relationship counseling, that has to happen through the family and through the family resources to establish that relationship, I mean, that's primary to any therapy situation is, you know, and I'm sure your past with the firefighting, that you know that very well, myself too, that that established relationship with the clinician or the therapist is extremely important to, to the success of the, of the thing. Yes, very concerning, and so as we go through, it'll be a good starting point, as like we said, as we build the plan.
Dan, I think you had something, yes?
Yes, thank you. Was there, obviously everybody's probably taking the scope of this survey from the past school year. Was there a broader scope of thought put into, you know, if I, if I think back to twenty-twenty, I, and one of the things that I kind of noticed was seventy-six percent of students, or seventy-six percent of teachers responded that students struggle to manage their time when learning from home, and I think that's a product of, of, of COVID, and I think that's something that we really should make sure that we're, uh, mindful of, um, because as kids go outside of, you know, Oxford and they, they, they... Because as kids go outside of, you know, Oxford and they, they graduate and they, maybe they go on to college or they go on to a job, time management is one of the things that they have to be spot on with. Because you're not going to show up to a job 45 minutes late and say, wow, you know, I just, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, a lot of that is contained in the ID curriculum. And I shouldn't say it's really not a curriculum, it's areas that you focus on, and it's called APL, it's Approaches to Learning, and it's really those skill sets that makes one successful. Most of the people that I've known that did not make it through college, it wasn't because they weren't smart enough, it was because of the other things that got in the way of their life, and it's those things like time management, um, and handling themselves, setting aside time and learning how to be a lifelong martyr, and all of those type of issues or other distractions that got in the way. So those are extremely important, and it was just, it was an area, quite honestly, that over the last couple of years, we've been trying to get to address, quite honestly, and not as an excuse, but, you know, COVID put a hold to a lot of professional development and put a hold on a lot of developing programs and that. And basically, you know, it was not, um, I would say, public school's finest time or moment as they struggled to deliver instruction effectively, either through video or other means, and even in person was extremely difficult as to navigate as well too. So, um, that's one of the areas in which as we go forward, is going to be looking at is making sure about, you know, instilling those skills, which seem to be very noticeably absent. And not every student, obviously, and there's a lot of them that have these skills highly defined, but also as well too, trying to make sure that it's a point of emphasis for our students as well.
Okay, let me ask one more. As you talk to other schools that have, um, Parkland, Columbine, the people that you all have talked to, is there any, um, data that will show us a counseling office before and after? And why I ask that is because I think we need to do everything we can to not only advocate for, resources in our buildings or shared with another district that we have a situation where we need somebody that can really, you know, dive deep into what's maybe creating an issue with a student. I think we also need to have that relationship now more than ever with the parent and the student and the district, so that we, we feel comfortable as a district to reach out to a parent, and a parent also feels as though that they can reach out to the district and say, I think I may have an issue, I might not be able to understand what's going on, who can I contact? That has to be paramount to what we're doing, is we have to be, so the, the parent or the point people, who are the point people that a parent can go to and say, I need some help?
And so I think that part of what the data will show as we go along and as we build the plan, I mean, it's one of the reasons why I go back to, we hired Todd Barlow as the executive director to help with that and manage that and develop that program within the guidance counseling and the FSLs, because we have the people now, uh, you know, we added two more counselors to the high school staff up here, and as well, and in the total number, as well as adding additional people, or new people, I should say, as we replace the other positions and that. So we're really excited moving forward, um, with what we've been able to do as far as fully staffing, the counseling part of lowering those ratios, as well as at middle school as well too, uh, changed the position over there, so that we have four counselors there, uh, which lowers that ratio as well too, and we're going to keep that for the next two to three years at least, and then we'll reassess at that point. Because at some point, with the grants and the funds and everything else, you know, there does come a, a financial reckoning. But that will be down the road, and we will work on it as we go along, so that we don't have to lay off, but that it is through attrition and normal process as we go back to more, you would say, standard levels of staffing in some areas, but some things won't change either though. As we go forward, we will, you know, say that's a point of emphasis, and so we may end up with six counselors always at the high school. But that'll also be determined by enrollment numbers as we move along. But yeah, that is very critical in forming that partnership.
Corey?
Just one other, one other point, kind of going to that, that comment about the 52% of students don't interact with their counselor. This was really eye-opening to me. I had a very tearful discussion with my daughter about this, kind of asking, you know, is this kind of stuff true? And the answer I got was, Dad, I made it four years through high school, and my counselor could walk past me in a hall and I wouldn't know who the guy was. I don't interact. Students go to teachers who really are not qualified to be counselors, and we're asking a lot of them to be, but she said, it's easier to confide in a teacher that I have a good relationship with. And that's putting a lot of burden on them that shouldn't be. How do we get those counselors more engaged, build that trust, so that when a student does have a, hey, I'm in a dark place, I go to my counselor instead of not bringing it up?
A lot of that is, you know, one of the things, it was important stuff, was lowering the counseling numbers so that they can accomplish that. Because being one over 500 is a lot different than one over 300. That is quite a difference in staffing and so forth, and feeling like you can accomplish that. So what ends up happening, if you have huge numbers, you tend to see the, the high flyers that need a lot of, hey, I want to go to Harvard, I want to go to U of M type of attention, and then you see the ones that are really struggling as well too. And so that group in the middle, who many times needs that support just as much and needs to have that, that connection, sometimes they're not as, um, available to the, to the counselors. So it's really about pushing in and different methods and finding ways to build that relationship. And a lot of it is just time spent with a counselor and having that face time to be able to interact, while they feel more comfortable with the teacher, is they see the teacher four out of five days. And they interact with them, and they may see him in the hallway, it may be a coach, it may be as well, and so they have that relationship built. So it's really about pushing that emphasis forward with the counselors as well too, and trying to make sure that as, there is certain expectations for having that with kids. And that's where, like I said, he's got big shoulders, so he'll be able to carry it, but Mr. Barlow will be able to help us.
Anyone else? Mary?
Thank you. I'll, I'll just add, one of the areas I see some concern is when our teachers are saying, when 51% of teachers indicate that students do not know how to care for themselves. You know, numbers like this, there's a lot under the social emotional learning, you know, that's concerning, that's beyond, that's far beyond the school's control, the district's control, the teacher's control. I just, I'm seeing an important, um, important partnerships with parents, really finding ways to bring them in and really be a part of it, so, so we're all communicating the same message. I mean, I mean, and I see a lot of things on the, the parents, on the areas to address for social emotional learning from the parents and guardians that, um, asking if teachers guide students on how to recognize their emotions. I mean, a lot of adults I know don't know these things, can't name their emotions. You know, a few years ago, we talked about a program they were doing at Lakeville, you know, just helping students to understand what is it that you're feeling? Because quite often, it's not what I think it is, you know? So just things like this, I think the parents, parents and guardians can really benefit from it too.
And that's where one of the areas in the three-year plan, which doesn't have a survey necessarily attached to it, but it's kind of like embedded throughout a little bit, is that community outreach, government outreach portion that really looks at like the education piece and giving that, hosting those type of workshops and so forth for parents that may need that, and trying to target certain audiences and so forth, and trying to, to, to help that and build up the skills as needed, um, as, as well. And you also got, you know, as far as when the survey was taken, it's after two years of COVID. I mean, it's not uncommon, and you're seeing stories across America, that many of the type of skills, SEL especially, have not been as developed or at the levels at which they would be expected. But from everything I've also read as well too, that, you know, a lot of this is quickly recovered as you, as you work at it and as you intentionally teach to it and intentionally, uh, address them with the, with the children, either through as a parent or as a teacher and stuff. So it's going to be important to draw those out as we move forward and try to make sure that we have areas in which we can get in there and work with the child and help. Because that is going to be important, because those skills, I mean, I really do believe that they are, um, you know, I think most of the research shows that we're within a few IQ points, I don't know if it's 10 or 20 of each other, the majority of us, if you go look at the bell curve. It's really about, the difference is really, is about applying what you have and what you do with it. It's not so much your innate intelligence. So, um, and that's what we're about, is trying to make sure that our children are able to take care of the opportunities that are before.
Thank you for the data, thank you for beginning with data.
And if you have anything that you would like to email us and stuff like that, please do, email me, and I'll make sure that as we, we go along that we have that. Just don't assume that we'll catch everything, so if you have some insights and would like to, you know, share those, uh, some of those that you've shared tonight, please email them and we'll take, uh, take those into account as we move forward.
Thank you. Anything else? I think that's it.
Thank you.
As Superintendent Weaver comes back, we are on 4C, third-party review update. As a spokesman of the board, I just, in the last 48 hours, had some conversations with Guidepost, the company that is going to be doing the third-party review, and they've asked me to share some information with the community. And that being said, um, there are a few things that I wanted to, to say on the front side of all of that, and on behalf of the board, I, I guess I want to begin with this. We as a board, because we're members of the community before we are board members, appreciate that many of you have questions about actions the Oxford Community Schools and the boards have taken since the tragic shooting at Oxford High School on November 30th. We are working on ways to be more effective with open communication and how we can communicate more effectively with our school families and with the community as a whole. And so we're going to begin that process this evening by doing a few things. And first is to restate the priorities that we shared from the very beginning. We also want to determine exactly what happened in the events leading up to, on, and after the November 30th shooting. We'll work to ensure the highest level of student and staff safety and specifically prevent another shooting at Oxford Community Schools. We want to create an environment where students feel safe, supported, and empowered to learn. And finally, we'll use what we learned to help lower the risk of school shootings across the United States. So what has been done, and what I'll be reiterating at this moment, are things that have been said over board meetings, most of which by Jill, but some by Jason from SEC. In December, Secure Education Consultants, SEC, one of the top consulting firms in their field, launched a full examination of policies, procedures, current physical operations as they related to safety, security, and emergency preparedness at our schools. This audit was to evaluate whether the current security measures in place are appropriate and consistent with best practices. What they found out, while Oxford, Oxford Community Schools' level of preparation, emergency planning, and related safety and security operations is among the best they've observed, SEC did identify minor areas for improvement, and our administrative team has been working with SEC to implement those improvements since that time. The full report from SEC, including all the recommendations, can be found on our district website. We're also drawing on the expertise of our district safety committee, which includes representatives from area police, fire departments, local governments, and school administration. We recognize the need for ongoing parent input, and we've recently formed a parent subcommittee for safety. Based on research and recommendations from SEC, the, the district safely, a safety committee and the parent subcommittee, we've expanded our internal security services. We contracted with a third-party security firm to provide armed security personnel at every school building for the 2022-23 school year. Just this evening, the board approved the purchase of a district-wide mask notification system that will provide both audio and visual alerts when activated. As announced last week, we will employ any, an ammunition detection dog at Oxford High School beginning at the start of 2022-23 school year. This dog will be dedicated exclusively to Oxford schools and will train with our lead security officer. This will allow for longevity and consistency of programming, and will draw on the expertise of our security officer, who has been integral in our safe return to school. He will begin training with our new Labrador in August. Additionally, he has secured complimentary veterinary services for the length of the dog's time in Oxford. Some cutting-edge technology. We will integrate two new cutting-edge technologies that, along with the other security measures already in place, will make Oxford High School among the safest in the country. First, we've already begun to upgrade our cameras at the high school to employ Zero Eyes technology, an AI platform that can detect weapons before shots are fired and automatically report to emergency dispatch, enabling faster response times for first responders. Next, Oxford High School will serve as a national pilot for Evolve Express, the fastest weapon screening system on the market. The system uses artificial intelligence to automatically detect a threat and consistently and accurately screen 60 people every minute for firearms and other threats. That's 10 times faster than traditional checkpoint systems. This is the same technology that was recently installed at several Disney properties, Six Flags theme parks, and major convention centers and visitor attractions across the country. At upcoming board meetings, we'll take a closer look at these technologies, plus family, and the media will have the opportunity to view the systems in action prior to the school's opening in the fall. We hope to have other demonstrations like we had today, is one of those points. Our staff will be fully trained in the new technologies. We will resume Alice drills and similar emergency preparedness training with staff and students in a sensitive way and with their advanced knowledge, just as Mr. Weaver had mentioned. Many middle school and high school students have already received training in how to download and use the OK2say anonymous reporting app, and will continue that training in the upcoming school year. Our staff continues to receive threat assessments and other mental health screening training. But it doesn't end there, and here's where the conversation about the independent investigation. As you know, we've initiated an independent investigation into the events surrounding the shooting of November 30th. We want to, we want to learn what led up to this tragedy, what happened immediately prior to and on the day of the shooting, and exactly how the school responded that day and in the days that followed. To ensure the integrity of this investigation, we needed the best. It was critical that we select an independent team that highly experienced in conducting sensitive investigations of a similar nature. The team at Guidepost Solutions, in partnership with Varnum Law, brings global experience working with K-12 and higher education institutions, nonprofits, Fortune 500 companies, government agencies, and others on similar investigations. They employ proven investigative and interview techniques that create a safe, non-threatening environment for students, family members, community members to share relevant information. The district is making all materials and information available to this investigative team. The investigative report will be unbiased, reflection of the team's findings, and will include actionable recommendations related to those findings. Guidepost will share their report with the community, at the same time it shares with the board and school administration. In the end, our goals are to maximize students, student and staff safety in the future, and specifically to prevent another shooting at Oxford Community Schools. Of course, independent investigation like these take time, and we will not sacrifice the integrity of the investigation with an artificial timeline. With that said, the investigation team is getting in place, getting up to speed, and getting ready to begin, and they will conduct and complete their work with deliberate care and speed. and speed. In the meantime, they've developed and launched a website, they're going to develop and launch a website dedicated to our response to the events of November thirtieth. We expect the site to be up within about a month. It will include information about security investments and upgrades, notification about the onsite security technology demonstrations that I mentioned earlier in the presentation, details about the nature and scope of the independent investigation, and periodic updates on where they're at in the process, links to resources such as counseling and services, and a secure email through which students, family, members of the community can share information or request a meeting with investigation. In fact, this secure email is now available. Those who would like to request a meeting or share information with investigators can contact them at oxford@guidepostsolutions.com. I'll say that again. The website is also where the final report and set of recommendations will be posted. Again, we as the Board appreciate the questions, concerns expressed by so many of our community. We understand how difficult it is to wait while we all seek answers. While we continue to ask for your patience and support through this painstaking process, we commit to a more open line of communication that we hope brings some measure of comfort And just from me, I want you as a community to know that at the end of winter, February-ish, this Board had already created a Subcommittee that was going to be looking at potential third-party reviewers, GuidePost being one of the top three, I think, that we had selected. There was always work being done, and there is even now work being done by GuidePost. Most of it, none of it, we know about, except that they're working. They'll give me updates periodically, like they spent a whole week getting to know the prosecutors of Oakland County and getting to talk about information sharing and that kind of stuff, and then they go away and we don't hear. But I want to assure you, if you're not hearing something from us, it's because there's things happening, but an independent reviewer isn't going to be sharing with us. They're going to tell us that they've hit benchmarks, that they're going to be now interviewing people, or they're now going to be doing this or that or the other, and that's the kind of stuff that will be on the website. So that website is something that you're going to want to have access to when it comes out in a month, and certainly have access to that email. GuidePost is now willing to begin to get information from you, hear questions from you, or even request to have conversations with anyone in the community, parent, staff, student, so that they can best do their investigation and come out with a statement and recommendations. And I want to reiterate that the plan is for them to provide that report to the community simultaneously to the Board. We won't see it ahead of time, we won't see it to edit it, it's going to be the same report that everyone gets, and it's all going to happen at one time. And so we as a Board are glad that the rubber's finally hitting the road, we are glad that things are beginning to happen, and more will be happening during the summer. And I just wanted to provide, on behalf of the Board, that update to all of you. So thank you very much.
Mr. Don.
Yes, sir?
That email or all that information, we don't know about that.
Say that again.
We don't know about that email, that information. They don't share that with us.
No, this goes directly, this is...
Confidential.
Yes, so that email address, everybody, so you know, that email address is a GuidePost email address. It's on their server. It doesn't come to us, we don't see the emails, we're not involved in any of that process. Thank you for clarifying. But that is a GuidePost Solutions email address on their server. And the website is also being put up by them. We're not putting up and controlling the website. Dan?
So when will that, we don't know, within a month?
They say they're going to have it within three or four weeks, they'll have the website up, but right now you can start emailing.
Okay, so how will we communicate that? Will it just be on our website?
That's one of those times they'll probably come to me and say, hey, the website's going to go up tomorrow, and then we'll get with Danny, and Danny can then put out a release.
Okay, I just hesitate to have a link on our website.
No.
Where you click on it, it just, to me...
I think what we're going to do is just send a mass mailing like we typically do, an electronic mail.
Okay, and how will we communicate with those that maybe don't get, because there are community members that aren't on our mailing list.
Well, they have plans to put information in local newspapers. They're going to try as best they can to make sure that everyone in this community knows that they're ready to hear and listen.
And then the way that questions are asked are through this, and then GuidePost will contact, or is it like a two-way communication back and forth?
GuidePost will most likely contact everyone who emails them and attempt to have a conversation first by phone to see what their thoughts are, and then if necessary, if they can find groups of people who have the same question, they said that they would be meeting with them personally.
Okay, I just want to make sure that there's not a backlog, and then all of a sudden, well, you know, these forty-seven people were answered, but seven people weren't.
I'll talk to them, I will...
Because it's hard, because if fifty people send an email in and five don't get responded, well then we see that five, and all of a sudden it looks like, well, you're keeping an eye on who's getting responded to, who's not. I don't care who gets responded to and who doesn't, I want to make sure that everybody gets responded to.
Yep.
So if they can tell us how they're going to have some benchmarks for that, I would like to know that.
Yeah, I've got that written down, and I'll talk to them about potential backlogs and how they're going to address those.
Thank you.
That's a great thought. All right, we move on to item number five, Curriculum and Instruction.
Okay, I am back with you for the third time, or I think I came four times this year because of everything that happened, to present our benchmark data per the PA forty-eight, which impacts our state aid funding. As you know, as a result of like the extended COVID learning plan for the last few years, we've had to develop benchmark goals and monitor them and present them to the Board three times a year, so this serves as the final presentation of the Board for this school year. So as a reminder, for our seated schools, I put arrows on the left there, so the end of the year goal for reading, as measured by our fast-screening assessment, is to improve our scores from the fall to the spring by at least fifteen points, and in math by at least six points. These point values were determined based on our averages from the previous years and our performance over the previous years. I'll never forget, last year Chad, you were the one who said, oh, these are really aggressive based on the times that we're in, keep that in mind because we're going to need that grace when you see the results. And unfortunately, we did not meet our goals for the end of this school year. You can see, I'm just going to go back real quick, I hope I can backspace this way. So again, fifteen points and six points, our overall growth, and you can see on the right, I circled them, was for reading twelve point seven points, and for math, we fell just shy at five point three points. One of our requirements is to also break down the data by subgroups, and, oh, wait a second, because I think, there we go. And so you'll see the next several slides are actually broken down by subgroups. Some subgroups did individually meet the goals, so you can see as an example, Special Education met the goal in reading as a subgroup. But the first row is everyone factored together. And broken down male, female, and additional subgroups. Again, you can see our African-American subgroup met the goal there in reading. There were some interesting trends for us to, I guess, continue to follow, but again, I think for obvious reasons, an interruption to our schooling in our school year, we did not make adjustments to our goal, we probably maybe could have after the winter assessment window, but we wanted to see what we can do using the time that we had. For our virtual schools, you can see, again, I use the arrows there, OVA used a combination of assessments, so they used NWEA for reading in grades six through eight, but for grades, the elementary grades, they shifted to a Fanta-Simpanel screening, which means even as a virtual school, they made it a real concerted effort to read with every single student in person, which is more informative as far as reading behaviors go, and we were able to actually see better alignment with performance, daily performance with their reading assessment score. And then in math, they went all NWEA for all grades. Their goal with NWEA was just to meet the national mean, and OVA had some pretty good news. DKK and grades two through five did meet their goal of improving by at least two grade levels, or two, not two grade levels, I'm sorry, two reading levels. First grade did not, we were really ambitious, that was a grade level that we were hoping would show four levels within the Fanta-Simpanel system, and they just barely made it at three point six. They did meet their NWEA goals. Again, their assessments or their groups are broken down as well, and I have them So we have historically met our goals, and so this year, I remember working on it last week, and I said to Kenneth, I'm a little bit maybe sad that we didn't, but for obvious reasons we didn't, sorry. I wanted to make sure that everybody knew what we were doing over the summer to make sure our kids continued their learning. I'm not really sure why I'm very emotional, sorry. I do know I'm emotional, I care about our kids and what happened, and we want to make sure that we're giving them every opportunity possible. So over the summer, we are seeing hundreds of kids in our summer programming. At the elementary level, we are offering GRAS, which has been really successful for our students, we deeply discounted it through our grants that we've received at just ten dollars per subject, and that's an at-home, at-your-own-pace learning system for ELA, English Language Arts and Math. We have hundreds of families participating in that. We are offering a seated summer school experience at Lakeville, which is much more comprehensive than we've normally offered. We have two social workers working the summer school, which are offering weekly social, emotional, learning lessons. We have our restorative practices coordinator who will be modeling restorative circles. And we also have a STEM opportunity as an extension after summer school on Wednesdays and Thursdays for families who want to sign up for that. Online options at OVA using ExactPath for students. We do also have some OVA students who are participating in the seated summer school, if that was appropriate for them. And every school is also doing a reading engagement plan, which is more of a fun way to keep kids engaged around reading. At the secondary level, there is a seated summer school for middle school kids, which will be held at Clear Lake, and then obviously for our high school students, a credit recovery opportunity, which will be held at the OVA lab. We are also running a summer feeding. Normally, we provide summer feeding at OES, that's where the federal program is approved for. I was a stickler and really advocated for summer feeding to be available where we have kids attending summer school, and Patty from Food Services was fantastic and went to the state and got an additional waiver, so we're actually offering two summer feeding opportunities so that makes sure the kids that are coming to school have breakfast and lunch as well. We are working really hard with OELC, the kids that are going to summer care, to be shuttled back and forth so that they don't miss the opportunity because their parents are working. And then we are, as Chad mentioned, working hard partnering with the parent group and also hiring our own additional social, emotional, learning connector activities to be doing throughout the summer to keep the kids engaged. So I wanted to share that a little bit, and I'm very sorry about my emotionality. I don't know if you have any questions or...
Board members, any comments or questions? Mary?
Please don't be sorry for being you. We may not have hit our goals, but I'm also seeing that overall there wasn't any loss. You know, we're coming close, and I think that says a lot. I think that says a lot, and I appreciate that we didn't change the goals because we do still have to, you know, kids are still here to learn, and we have to do the, you know, we have to do what we can, and, yes, and so I notice there isn't, we may not have hit the goals we wanted, but we're still moving forward, the kids are still learning. So I think that says something.
And you may not be able to see this in the data, but a little bit of a data nerd. The group that was the most affected by COVID is our current second grade. We shut down in March at the most pivotal time in their reading and math skills, like coming together and really being synthesized. They are the group that we've followed very closely, and it is honestly amazing that they have made accelerated growth, they're not the group that we're most worried about anymore. The current group that, from a district perspective, that we are worried about is our first-grade group. You know, and I'm speaking primarily at elementary, they're the group that didn't have a ton of preschool experience, so we're really seeing that, they're the group that we were hoping to have most participants in in summer school, but I think we're seeing lower numbers than we had hoped for that.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I am hearing those challenges from other school board members around Oakland County and the state, too, that those same age groups, because they just haven't had those experiences to be involved with other students and just learning how to interact with other people, and now you're putting them into school without all of that background. So I hear you, thank you.
No, it's okay. Nina, thanks for sharing this. I don't, I can't really say that I'm surprised, I mean, based on everything that's been stacked against us. So I'll be interested as we move into next year, what those goals are. I know you've got a real keen eye for that, and we'll put a lot of thought into it. So thank you, though, for talking to us more about what the summer programs look like outside of learning recovery, I'll call it. One thing that this community is going to need over the summer, the kids are going to need, is that opportunity for social interaction. So having programs like what you're talking about available, it's going to be critical. I'm glad that that level of thought is being put into those opportunities.
Thank you, Chad. Anyone else? Corey, and then Dan?
Just a quick note, I know you mentioned that you were really surprised by the reading of the second grade. That doesn't surprise me one bit because we have some awesome second-grade teachers, so that really doesn't surprise me that they kicked it in gear and made those results. They're pretty amazing.
Dan?
So these are the challenges we face. The challenges we face are...
So those, these are the challenges we face. The challenges we face are, have so many layers. You can't count them. You just can't. There's been loss of learning, not just in Oxford, but nationwide throughout COVID. I mean, it's, you can't deny it. There's no way that you can deny that there's been loss of learning. What we have to do is we have to find a way, again, I'm going to bring it right back. We have to find a way to connect with the students. We have to find a way to connect with the parents to get them to the programs that are going to help some of that loss of learning. Because we always, we've always heard over time that the summer is when they have that little bit of gap, and then it takes the first month or month and a half of school to get them caught back up, and then they get rolling. We're, we can see by the numbers that that, the summer is so very important. So I guess, as a district, whether parents agree or disagree with us, them, I think we all have to understand that our job as a district is to educate first and foremost in a safe environment. And I think that's what we have to focus on. We have to focus on making sure that we get the kids, we get the students to help to cover those gaps that have been, it's not just this year, it's built up. It's built up over a number of different years. So I understand why you're emotional. I get it. But again, we, if we need to, if we need more bodies, if we need more people to pull the rope, to help the, we've got to get them. We've got to find them out some way.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else? I need to thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Burna, how are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you. Again, you have two resolutions on the board agenda, obviously, that you could see. One is the final amended budget for this year, the 21-22 school year, as well as a separate proposal for the budget, proposed budget for next year for all of our funds.
And so public know that we reviewed this last board meeting?
That's right.
And so the formality is, is the next board meeting. We put a motion on the floor, and we seek to approve. So would someone like to put the first motion on the floor, please? Chad?
Move to approve the 2021-2022 final amended general fund budget for the general fund, capital project fund, student activity fund, community service fund, food service fund, debt retirement fund, and millages as presented.
Thank you. Support? Corey, support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would someone like to put the second amendment or motion, which is the 2022-2023 proposed general fund budget? Corey?
Move to approve the 2022-2023 proposed general fund budget for the general fund, capital fund, or capital project fund, student activity fund, community service fund, food service fund, debt retirement fund, and millages as presented.
Thank you. Is there support? Chad, support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We've already done C, the bid recommendation, right?
Yes.
And now we go on to OVA laptop purchase request.
That's right, yes. As you see in your board packet, there's a request for, I believe it's 150 devices for our students, and that would be coming out of our 2022-23 OVA budget.
All right. Someone want to put this motion on the floor?
We do have a correction to the motion. There was two quotes in the packet, and we only caught one. So whoever's going, would like to read it, I do have the, the numbers.
Why don't you give that to Corey, and he can put it out as you have it written?
Okay. Let me know if you can read my scribble.
Move to approve the purchase of laptops.
For the amount?
For the amount of $59,699.70 plus $99,499.50 from CDW government as presented.
It's the merger of two things, right?
Correct.
All right. So one was missing.
Yeah, the bid's actually in your packet.
Okay. And, all right, so we have the motion out. Let's get support, and then we'll have a discussion. Mary supports the motion. Discussion?
Just for the record as well, too, we are, and I've already had the conversation, and we had some issues within reorganizing the tech department over the last couple of weeks and that. So I apologize for this not coming a little sooner. We're asking for you to approve it tonight so that we can have the laptops in time for school. If we don't, we had, we'd have to wait till the second, the next board meeting in July, and we might run into some issue where it would not, might not happen. So to prevent that, but then I've also had the conversation to make sure in the future, as we need this request consistently year after year, that we'll move it up so that you'll have a board meeting in between as well, too. So.
All right. Very good. Yes, sir?
So this is just, this is our, our normal refresh of hardware.
Yeah. So you would, if you look back at history in terms of most Junes that we, we come to the budget and we present the budget, normally in the May-June timeframe, OVA does make large purchases during this time of the year as well. And again, they make those because, again, that gives them the time over the summer for our techs to obviously prepare those devices for the start of school.
This one's a little bit larger in the fact that we are purchasing for ninth grade, which is a little bit different than normal. We've used Chromebooks in the past with the ninth grade, but with their, the complexity of the classes and the demands that they have, the OSEC students, both the virtual OSEC students and the seated OSEC students, we are purchasing laptops for them. This is a little bit different as well, too.
Any other comments or questions?
One follow-up question. Are there any concerns, even if we get the order in soon? Are there any concerns that supply chain could cause any delays in getting these things here on time?
You know, I haven't heard that specifically.
Should be good. We got the high sign from, from Mr. Santa, who's been in contact.
Thank you, Mr. Santa.
Four to six?
Yeah.
Thanks, Mark.
You sure that was four to six or forty-six?
Forty-six. All right. Any, any, yes, Mary?
I just had a quick question on the actual hardware itself. The Surface, aren't the Surface laptops in two pieces? I'm thinking of a different Microsoft product.
Yeah.
Okay. Because there's other Surface Go's or something that the keyboard is separate. I just want to be sure these were all in one?
That's a Surface Pro, and you're right, that does, you could detach that, and you could actually use your finger.
And I had bought one a few years ago, and you have to buy a keyboard separately. That's why I was checking, making sure these are all in one unit.
During the pandemic, we bought Surface Go. This is a device that we've used for two years now. Well, carried to mobile search, and it does not have a attached keyboard. Students like it, and it fits in a nice, very strong case as well.
Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, she doesn't have, I'll take care of her.
Thank you.
So in place of Mrs. Lamont tonight, just quickly be addressing, she had presented last week over the addition of kindergarten curriculum, to remind you, at the Lighthouse as the authorizer of the charter, the online school charter, we have to approve, and that's what, after that presentation, we're now asking you to approve that.
Very good. Would someone like to put this motion on the floor, please? Dan?
Move to approve the third amendment to the contract between Lighthouse Connections Academy and Oxford Community Schools.
Is there support? Corey, support? Discussion? Dan?
Sam, I apologize. I was not here last week. What was the revenue from last year's partnership roughly? We get 3%, correct?
Yeah, not a problem. Actually, the revenue was approximately $450,000. This year, it's a little over a half a million, and next year, we're projecting over $600,000. So what we do is we get a 3% fee as a percentage of their state foundation allowance, and that's how we collect that fee. So it's a, it's a direct transfer from the state foundation allowance, and what they get monthly, we get that revenue. So it's a sizable piece of, of revenue for us in totality.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else? Seeing nothing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, everyone, we're getting near the end of the meeting. Let's just take a three to five minute break for, before we get to unscheduled audience participation. I'll get those cards from Angela, and then we'll hit that section. Thank you very much for your patience. All right. We've got all the board members back. One, two, three, four, five. Two are absent. Yep, that makes seven. All right. Very good. So Angela, nine o'clock. We're back in. So just as an introduction and some information for those who are coming up to speak, as always, we've kind of got the little light thing going on over there, and Mary has the controls. She has a timer on her phone. At four minutes, the light goes on, just to be a reminder to anyone speaking that you got one more minute left, and then it'll go on again at five, and that would end that time period. Our first individual kit, please
Hello.
Hello.
You actually addressed quite a few of my things that I wanted to talk about. However, one of the things that came up in Mr. Weaver's presentation with the cabinet, speaking to students not feeling connected to their counselors. I can attest that my son, that is a freshman, one, we chose to put him back into Oxford High School, or put him into Oxford High School after the shooting. My other ones have all gone, have gone through. He was doing OVA, was not doing well. We chose to put him in. He did not do well at all at OVA, to be honest. That was his fault. However, repeatedly, I have sent questions to his counselor, and I have repeatedly been ignored. About the only time I have received responses is when I have gotten nasty. And I mean, I have been very, I've kept my language clean, but it is very clear that I have been very pissed. To this day, I'm still trying to get her to respond to an email that I sent her in April. I understand the end of the year, graduation, you've got all these things going on, because I sent her some stuff in May after graduation, but it is still end of the year. I get that they're busy at the end of the year, but it should not take a parent three months, four months, getting nasty, to get a response from a counselor. If parents are having that problem, are the kids. My son has absolutely no idea who his counselor is. I know who it's supposed to be, but again, I don't get any responses. I have a son who has six and a half credits at the end of the year. He did an after-school credit recovery. I'm trying to find out what the heck is going to happen with the other one that I paid for, because nobody told me he couldn't do two at a time. So I'm still trying to figure that out, but he has six and a half credits, so I'm also now trying to figure out, does he actually have to take those other classes to make it up for what he didn't pass the first half of the year, but he did the second half? But she will not respond. So now I don't even know who to address. Do I send it to her and her alone? Do I send it to her and Mr. Wolf, who is on his way out of the high school? Do I send it to her and Mrs. Beasley, who is on her way into the high school, who I have, by the way, I am very upset that she's leaving the middle school because my daughter is going into the middle school, and we love Mrs. Beasley. I get it. She belongs at the high school, and she's going to do fabulous, but I wish she was going to be at the middle school. But again, now she's walking into the middle of a situation, and that's not fair to her. Luckily, she's familiar with me, so she knows what I'm like, and she knows it's because I care about my kids. But again, if parents are not getting responses, are the kids. You talk about the difference between a 1 to 500 student ratio versus a 1 to 300. 1 to 300 is still too many. I'm sorry, but you expect, you've got class sizes that are 1 to 30, 35 kids. I know that's not what it is at Oxford, but there are schools that are that way. There are schools, I, the classes I had were huge. 1 to 30, 1 to 40, and you're expecting counselors to be able to handle 300. That is not acceptable. They cannot handle that. Teachers can't handle 30 kids each day, multiple times. I mean, you're, they're, you know, they have 30 kids at a time. They're actually responsible for, what is it, 135? I don't know. My math, I suck at math. I help with robotics, but I don't do math. I, it just, it's one of those things where that is one of the first things that needs to be considered in the mental health of these kids, if you're expecting the school to actually help them in that capacity. As far as the situation with not knowing how to take care of themselves, school needs to step in, I guess, but ultimately, we need to be promoting it back to the family. That's where they need to be learning most of it. I do agree with the new rule that says they have to take a financial class before they graduate. That is the biggest thing most kids fail at after school. But again, that's, comes down to counseling and help.
So real quick, just to address, you talked to Mr. Wolf. Who's sitting there? Back to Mr. Wolf. If you want to talk right now, you can go ahead and do that, and we'll take care of the situation. And I apologize for the inconvenience. Okay?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shirley?
Do I have to push a button?
You don't have to push a button. You just speak.
Okay. I started out this evening live streaming this session, and you got to the point where you were talking about counselors, and I got in my car, and I'm here. I was a counselor at Oxford Middle School and Oxford High School from 1987 till I graduated in 2002, retired. And I have a lot to say about counselors and their relationships to children. When I first went to the middle school, one of the first things I did, I had a colleague, Mr. Doyle Rice, who was like-minded. We started sifting through report cards at the end of each marking period. We would find kids who were failing for more classes. We would set up a group that would meet once a week, different class period, so they weren't missing the same class every week. And we would have a group where we listened and where we worked with kids to empower them to want to do better and to be able to do better. At the high school, when I first came to the high school, there were no computers. We worked with students, and we had groups in the high school. We worked with students and we had groups in the high school of students. I found some young women who I suspected were into high-risk behaviors. I pulled them together, we met, again, different class periods, once a week and I listened and they talked and they shared their stories. And sometimes I worked with the youth assistance, Hank Slendcare was the youth assistance person then and he was amazing. And we would run the group together. Probably of the 30 young women I worked with over my years, I've had two of them die of an overdose. The rest are loving mothers, good parents. I'm still in contact with them on Facebook. They remember their girls' group, they still hang together and we had, we had boys' groups. And then we got computers. And I also, I'll say, I got my counseling degree because I was classroom teacher and I realized I cared more about how my students were emotionally and socially than I cared about the curriculum I was supposed to teach. So I went into counseling. I also, I got a specialization in career counseling. I've been an adjunct professor at Oakland University in their school counseling program. So I've taught college students who were aspiring to be school counselors. And I know that the relationship that students have with somebody, anybody, at the high school or at, at any level, educationally, research shows that relationship is key. Now, we may be here to educate, but that's, we're here to empower students to become constructive, productive citizens. And once the computer was put in my counseling office, I was required to do more and more scheduling, to do more and more, I don't know, that's why I retired. I said, I didn't go into this job to sit behind a computer. I went into this job to interact with students and learn and help them become better people. And probably when I left, my ratio was 350 to one, but I would go through and try to meet with each student on my list at least once a year. I would work, I worked, I went into the career counseling part because I was concerned about the kids at O-Tech, the kids who didn't want to go to college, didn't need to go to college, but who could find a satisfying career in the trades. And I still think that that's crucially important, that we pay attention to the kids who don't need to go to college. Anyway, I, I had to come and I had to say this and you need more counselors and they need to be interacting with students.
Thank you for your service and thank you for your wisdom. Linda?
I'm a little shorter.
Adjust it any way you want.
Okay. And I talk really soft, so. My name's Linda, my husband Jeff. We've lived in Oxford our entire life and the two generations before him and the two generations after us. We've all gone to Oxford School System. So we've got five generations of Oxford strong. So trust me when I say, we don't envy the path that you as board members have had to take in the last couple of years. We pray about it a lot. We think about the unprecedented things that you've had to navigate. The social media itself is a tremendous burden and responsibility. The political divide that most kids when we were in high school had no knowledge of, let alone fighting and, and already taking sides on what they believe in, when they really don't even know what they believe in yet. Then there's the COVID pandemic and the mask-up mandates and having to stay home, isolated. These are huge developmental things for kids. And now we hit the tragedy of November 30th. So we have seven grandchildren. Four of them are in the high school or were in the high school that day. One of them witnessed and is on the highest trauma alert with several others. So the recovery efforts were really zeroed in on, not only with our granddaughter, grandkids, but our own children and how, as parents, they're navigating all this. So I'm just saying that our thoughts and prayers are with you because there's so much going on. But what brings us here today, tonight, in the midst of all this other stuff, is just something that's really heavy on our hearts. And it was the project from OES fifth graders presenting transgender information along with definition of gay and lesbians to fourth graders as a year-end project. They're kids presenting information to other kids as if it's normal and that they should just be aware of it. Our question and why we're bringing this to your attention and just laying the foundation, we really care about Oxford. We have invested at every level, sports, you know, even my kids were on National Honor Society. I mean, it's, it's strong for us. But now my kids are wondering if they need to be looking to pull their kids out of the school system if we're heading down this. So my question is, is or has the board been made aware of this situation? If so, I may not be aware, but has there been any course of action taken as a result of it? And my concern is, ever since my kids were in school, parents were always notified in advance of sex education classes, given the opportunity to take them out or let them stand back because it's a parental right to educate their own children on this. I'm concerned why that wasn't done in advance, especially with how controversial this situation is. I look at these innocent little kids that are having to grow up so fast and these kids haven't even had their first sex education class and they're being taught by other kids, something that is very controversial. So my last question is, is the school system embracing the teaching of, and the normalizing of this kind of curriculum to the kids?
Thank you. I have to talk to the boss here for a second. So yes, the board was aware of the situation and yes, action has been taken and Superintendent Weaver will bring that up in, near closing comments, near the end of the meeting. So we will be able to reply to some of your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that ends unscheduled audience participation. Board members, you have a list of Board of Education meetings coming up and Angela sent a flurry of emails not too long ago. Superintendent Weaver, anything under clarification?
Yeah, just a couple. Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, on counselors, you know, the recommended by the Counselors Association is about 250 to one. I would probably, I would venture a guess that we are probably one of the handful of schools that are even close to that in Michigan. Michigan ranks 49th or 50th, I think it is, in counselor to student ratio. It's closer to 450 to 500, somewhere in there, to one, as far as usually a standard counselor ratio. So we are getting closer. We also have FSLs, who are social workers, who are not quite counselors, but they are also support. So that actual number of mental health slash support that is there for actual students into high school is actually quite, quite lower. The other thing is to, for, under clarifications is the issue. Yes, we have addressed the issue. Third and fourth graders will not be, they were practicing for their presentation to their own parents and we are no longer, there will be certain topics that are, how to say, not age-appropriate and they will not be presented to the third and fourth graders to that moving forward. That has been communicated quite clearly, as well to making sure that it is not, the topic is not LGBTQ, it is about discrimination. They are able to, also, we have presentations on discriminations of race, discriminations, because it's really social issues. There's also ecological issues that go in to this. It's, it's a project where the kids are able to choose, they really do choose their topic. As a social issue, there's, it's, it's kind of complicated is how, how they do it, but they are given the freedom to do that. But the topic is more about a social issue and it's more, it is about discrimination. It is not about sex ed. That has been also communicated clearly, that there does not need to be a definition of the terms to actually address the, some of the discrimination or some of the, the issues that may be involved, nor is the, how to say this as well, the, the topics are not chosen by the teachers or that is really, truly left up to the kids. If they truly, truly get stuck, but we do not guide them to the more controversial ones if we are attempting to guide them anywhere. So that is also as well, too. So it has been addressed and we are continuing to look at the situation and making sure, because you are right, we don't address sex ed until fifth grade and so that should be right. And even in fifth grade, we're going to a system of opting in to the presentation as well, too, firmly believing that it is a parent's right to choose both if your child is going to look at the discrimination that has been faced by certain groups of, of individuals, as well as for the other parents to make sure that their child is, it's age-appropriate for their child. So hopefully that answers it. If you got further questions, I can, after the board meeting, you can talk to me as well, too. So, or Mrs. Concha Collins, who's over the elementary instruction, who might have a better insight as well. And then the last clarification is, just a follow-up from last week, we had asked, the board had asked for a follow-up on the memorial update. Unfortunately, we've, I talked to Danny right before the board meeting, we are still having issues with one of the families in a picture and out of respect and honor of the, that family, we're trying to work further to get a picture of proper resolution that will present itself in a manner that is befitting of the honoring the life of the child. So we're patient and we just ask that everybody be patient as we work through this and as soon as we're able to find and locate that where they are and we'll system and, and that and just, just love on the family and we'll be moving forward at that point.
Yeah, and just want to reiterate that the issue is nothing negative. It's about the fact that we're struggling to find an image that has the right ratio, pixels, it is. So we want to make sure that when those four students are, are remembered, that they all have the same resolution. And so it's nothing negative, it's just finding the right picture so that it can be placed properly. All right. Final board comments? Dan?
Thank you. Real quick, I, last week was, or last board meeting was the retirees. It's always a bitter sweet to see some folks retire. Maybe we, we'll call her back and see if we can get an application because I think she has some really good ideas. But it's, it's always good to see that they're, they're going off into a life after education because this is a tough business, especially these last few years. And I also want to thank our staff from, you know, from central office all the way down to our, you know, our parapros and teachers, custodial staff that aren't really employees of the district, but they're all part of the team. The bus drivers get the kids to the school and, you know. And I also want to make sure that we, we thank the parents because this has been a very difficult year for parents and students and it's because of the partnerships that we have and, and the good, the great team that we have that, that allows us to continue. And our, our school year has been difficult and our, our folks are feeling it. And I think we felt it, too. But I can tell you this, that next year, we got to get a little bit of rust, get a little bit of energy because next year, we're going to get right back into the school year and we're going to, we're going to hit a little bit of a wall and we've got to figure out how to overcome it. Those are the things that we need to start putting in place as a board to make sure they have the resources so that when we hit that little bit of a wall, we can, we can overcome it. I'm excited about next year. I really am.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else closing comment? All right, very good then. Anything under other?
No, sir, not tonight.
Nor do I. So that means. It is 9:26 and this meeting is adjourned. It's a great day to be a Wildcat. Thank you.